Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get started. Welcome to the January Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Mr. Bolden, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Absolutely. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046 and sequence. Proper public notice of the meeting has been published in the local papers on January 5th, 2019. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on cable TV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Ed is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. We stand for the salute to the flag.
Mr. Bolden, can you please take the roll call?
Absolutely. Ms. Katamatory?
Here.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Mr. De La Tor?
I hear.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Connor? Mr. Kupfo?
Here.
Ms. McWark?
Here.
Ms. Takirian?
Here.
And Ms. Angley?
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay. Ms. Connor is here.
Our first order of business tonight will be recognitions, and we have a number of them. I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today, we will have many celebrations. We are going to begin with our Students of the Month, and then the Steam Tank Recognition, and finally, some staff member recognitions. As always, to my Students of the Month, and everyone who will be coming up here to be recognized, if you would, once you receive your certificate, please remain for a quick photo opportunity. We will begin the student recognitions by asking the Brandt Principal, Principal Bartlett, to come up, and he is going to honor kindergarten student Madeline Cruder, who happens to be an old friend of mine.
Maddie?
Okay. At this time, I would like to call to the podium Ms. Madeline Cruder, the Joseph F. Brandt School Student of the Month for December 2018. Madeline was nominated by her kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Petrosian. Mrs. Petrosian said, "Madeline was nominated for Student of the Month for multiple reasons. Her kindness and enthusiasm are evident in every lesson we learn in our classroom. She is always willing to raise her hand, excited to answer any question. Not only does she want to answer questions, but she always has such clever, well-thought answers you would think she was a little adult. This is a testament to her independence. For a five-year-old, Madeline shows independence in many ways. She is always there helping her friends if they need guidance. She tries to problem-solve different situations, and even if she is upset for a moment, she says, 'It's okay, it'll be fine.' Madeline has shown growth since September in her reading, writing, and math. She always tries her best, which is all the teacher could ever want from a student. I'm so proud of Madeline and can't wait to continue watching her grow throughout the year. As principal, I remember meeting Madeline for the first time during my initial community meet-and-greet way back in August. Ever since then, I look forward to her high-fives when she sees me in the hallway. Her bright smile is contagious, and her gentle ways shine through in everything she does. I can always count on Madeline to make me smile and remind me of why my job is so special. Madeline has been working hard on her writing. She is always stretching out her words, listening to all the sounds, and writing better and better every day. One moment that sticks out to Mrs. Petrosian is the day Madeline's mom shared pictures from her visit to her daddy's job. She went to his office and showed all of his coworkers how well she writes on their big whiteboard. Madeline shared this picture to the class with the proudest look on her face. Her kind heart, independent personality, love of learning, and her willingness to share all of her fun facts and smart thoughts make her an asset to the student body at Brandt. When asked about what she wants to do when she gets older, Madeline said, quote, "I don't know yet." When asked if she knew which college she would want to go to, she said, "Boston College because that's where my daddy went. Go Eagles." When told she was gonna receive this honor, Madeline said, "Every time Mrs. Petrosian announces the Student of the Month, I hope that it's me. I waited and worked really hard and got picked in December, and I was so excited. I love learning how to read, and I'm getting really good at it." In a moment that encapsulates her spirit, she added, quote, "Everyone is unique and different, and we have to be kind to everyone." Congratulations to Madeline Cruder, the Brandt School Student of the Month for December 2018.
And now for the Calabro School. Principal Vesmaniani was unable to join us tonight, but he is represented by one of the most popular teachers in Hoboken Public Schools, Mr. Jack Baker, who will present the Student of the Month Award to third-grade student Mallory Whitmore.
Mallory is a third-grade student in Ms. Contagianis's class at Salvatore R. Calabro School. She values her education, works hard on a daily basis, and pays attention to detail. She values and takes ownership of her work, and nothing but her best is turned in for all assignments. She is consistent in completing classwork as well as homework on a daily basis. She leads by her positive example and her vibrant attitude for learning. Mallory is actively involved outside of school as well. She is a member of the Girl Scouts and is part of the softball team in the spring. One can also find Mallory reading a book or creating a writing masterpiece. In addition, she plays the violin in the Calabro String Program and is a member of the choir as well. Her teacher, Ms. Contagianis, stated, "Mallory Whitmore is a well-rounded student and has a bundle of energy that absorbs knowledge around her. She is an excellent role model for her third-grade peers. Mallory brings a wealth of knowledge to classroom discussions and can often be found devouring books or volunteering in any way possible. Her caring attitude toward classmates combined with her willingness to learn and grow makes Mallory a wonderful example to all." When asked what she likes to be when she grows up, she quickly responded, "A teacher." She wants to help children with their writing and make learning fun. Mallory stated that her role model is her third-grade teacher, Ms. Contagianis, because she makes learning fun and interesting every day. When asked what she loves about school, Mallory stated, "I love third grade. I love it because it is challenging and fun at the same time." Mallory is an incredibly talented, dedicated student who exhibits positive energy each day. She participates in our gifted and talented program and has done exceptionally well this year. Anyone who comes in contact with her is bound to have an instant smile due to her nurturing manner. She is absolutely a great representative of Calabro for district Student of the Month. Congratulations, Mallory Whitmore.
And now for Connor's Elementary. Principal Pollins has asked that Mr. Metcalf represent her this evening as we celebrate the amazingness that is Grade 1 student Nala Lisa.
Nala Lisa has been nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Sheridan. Mrs. Sheridan has nominated Nala for the Student of the Month because of her positive character in the classroom and by always being ready to lend a helping hand to her peers. She is an asset to have in the classroom at Connor School because she is dedicated to using every opportunity to learn something new. Nala is a kind and caring peer who brightens everyone's day with her proud sunny smile. Nala is such an enthusiastic student who is always ready to start the day with her wonderful participation and leadership skills. Nala has shown much growth and improvement since the start of the school year and continues to take great pride in all the hard work she challenges herself with in first grade. Nala recently told Mrs. Sheridan after a lesson on facing challenges, "When I am faced with a challenge, I won't give up." This is what Nala exudes every day in our classroom, and Mrs. Sheridan is so proud of all of her accomplishments. Nala is a role model to younger students and her classmates. Nala is a wonderful, kind leader in the classroom who listens and follows directions so well. She believes in the classroom dues, her favorite one being, "We do friendships." Nala loves to make learning fun by working together with her peers and sharing her ideas with others. Nala is a wonderful and bright young person. She always has a smile for her peers and her teachers. She has an eagerness to express herself and tell others all the things she knows. Everyone at Connor's are all very proud that Nala is our school's District Student of the Month. Nala enjoys being a part of gymnastics, practicing yoga, and enjoys dancing. Nala shared with Dr. Pollins that her favorite subject is math because Nala enjoys learning about strategies used to work on addition and subtraction. When Nala was asked what she wants to be when she grows up, she replied, "I want to be a cheerleader because I can help sports teams do well on their games. I also love to dance and would make new friendships with other cheerleaders." Nala shared that she is happy to be Student of the Month and that her mom will be so proud. We are all proud of you, Nala. Congratulations on being Connor's Elementary School Student of the Month.
Now for Wallace Elementary School. We would invite Vice Principal Dickerson, who will come up and tell us the many reasons why fifth-grader Zhang Shengbao is their choice for Student of the Month.
It is our pleasure to nominate Zhang Shengbao, also known as Bob, as the December 2018 Student of the Month for Wallace Elementary School. Zhang Sheng was nominated by his fifth-grade teachers, Ms. Martinez and Ms. Mesa, as well as his classmates. His teachers would like you to know that he was nominated because he is not only a very special part of our classroom community, but notably because even though he recently arrived from China, Zhang Sheng works diligently in all areas and in a short time has thrived. He has significantly increased his proficiency in English and has earned second honors. He is a math whiz. We admire him for his incredible mathematical abilities and appreciate when he takes the time to make sure his fellow classmates' calculations are correct. He is a wonderful child that is very liked by his classmates and his teachers. Mrs. Martinez was quoted in saying, "When we accept diversity, we learn to walk through life together. We open up our school, we opened up our classroom, and our hearts to Zhang Sheng." Mr. Shannon stated, "As the principal of Wallace School, I am touched by the impact Zhang Sheng has had on our community. Hard work, perseverance, and humility are integral attributes to the culture of our school. Zhang Sheng is the epitome of all three. We are truly proud to have him with us." Some of Zhang Sheng's notable achievements are as follows. Zhang Sheng wrote programs, or apps, for kids' games in China and was a straight-A student in China. Zhang Sheng was also December's Peace Pal for the Month at Wallace Elementary School. Zhang Sheng brings more diversity to a class that is already very diverse. He fits in like a perfect puzzle piece, and we are inspired by his desire to learn, his work effort, and his grit to succeed academically and emotionally. He is so pleasant and kind to all, and we all like him very much. If he can do so well while still working towards mastering the English language, how could we not be inspired to try our very best? Zhang Sheng's favorite sport is swimming. His interests include traveling with his family and writing children's programs. He is also interested in learning to play the violin. His father is an architect who teaches at the university level in China, and he often takes them places for vacation. His mother is a physician who works long hours because she has to see many patients. When he grows up, Zhang Sheng wants to be an inventor, possibly in the field of machines. When Zhang Sheng was informed of his nomination, he stated that he is happy with his class and he likes when his classmates make him smile. He is honored to receive the title of Student of the Month. Thank you, Zhang Sheng, for all you do for the Wallace School community.
Working our way up, literally upstairs, to Hoboken Middle School, we invite Principal Abraham, who will now come up and honor their school choice for Student of the Month, seventh grader Gabriela Gross.
Good evening. I'd like to recognize Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month, Gabriela Gross. Her teacher's recommendation, Ms. Roz Mester, stated, "I would like to nominate Gabriela Gross as the Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month. Gabriela has demonstrated leadership inside the classroom as well as outside the classroom. She shows empathy towards her peers and demonstrates leadership skills to help motivate others. She is approachable for help, which inspires all of her peers to trust and rely on her. She is usually the first student to volunteer to present her ideas or opinions in class. She also lends a helping hand to any peer in need. She is kind, respectful, energetic, and always has a smile on her face, as you can see." And now for the principal's recommendation. This was simply a very easy one to make. Gabriela is well-rounded and seemingly has a hand in all that Hoboken Middle School has to offer. So far this year, she has taken full advantage of the unique and innovative programming here at Hoboken Middle School. Gabriela was one of 25 students who traveled to the Longacre Theater on Broadway to see the prom, where students witnessed a powerful story about identity. She was selected to serve on an accredited leadership symposium at Keene University as well. At this venue, students at the secondary level discussed anti-bullying prevention measures for today's schools. Gabri thrived during this conference and was selected to turnkey her action plan for the entire venue of 200-plus participants. She enjoys challenging herself regularly, specifically in the area of STEM through her participation in our Math-infused Cardio Club program and the Math Olympiad program as well. After school, Gabriela is equally as busy as she is in school. She is passionate about the Passport to Learning program, where she excelled in the Junior Thespian's program and is currently enjoying the sport of fencing. From Passport to Learning, she commonly travels to practice for the Jersey City Capitals' coed travel hockey team. As you can see, she's also dressed for that. I'm not sure how she has any free time at all, but when she does, Gabby enjoys dancing, singing, and playing lacrosse. She aspires to one day become a school counselor because she enjoys making a difference in the lives of others, and I can promise you, we will have something waiting for you at that time. Gabby hopes to one day attend the University of Calgary and make the USA Women's Hockey Team. At Hoboken Middle School, we feel confident that she can do and accomplish anything that she puts her mind to. Congratulations, Gabriela Gross.
For the final part of student honorings, we would invite Principal Pico Pietra, who will wrap up the Students of the Month conversation by telling us all about senior Jared Swenger.
Good evening, Jared. So nominated by Ms. Chekov, she states that you're a wonderful student who proactively cares about his grades. He infuses effort into all of his assignments, and he is always so pleasant and helpful to his peers, faculty, and staff. Excuse me. I truly believe he deserves to be the Student of the Month because he earned high grades in all classes last marking period. He's also very proud of his accomplishments and deserves to be rewarded, as he is not the type of student to give up after being rewarded. He is very self-motivated. Mrs. Kerner and Mrs. Tank echo Ms. Chekov's feelings. He is always one to assist his peers in class and do so willingly. And what is great, he does it without prompting. He is always on task and excels as a math student as he is a perfectionist with his work. Anyone who knows Mrs. Tank, that coming from her, right? That's quite a compliment. Mrs. Weiner, who is senior counselor, states he's a unique young man whose voice as an individual is stronger than most his age. While he is an excellent math student, he's also a very talented artist, which is why he applied to Wrinkling College of the Arts to study gaming design. He has also applied to the University of California. For me, it's to see the smile on his face. It grabs me every time. Sometimes, on a daily basis, you walk through the halls all the time, and you're set on your next task, right? You're focused. But for some reason, I always know when he's in the hall, and I can't help myself and look up because I see him, and he always has this beautiful smile. And the smile is one that radiates kindness and is always, always welcome. Whether he's speaking with a peer, a teacher, an administrator, his affect is the same. It's kind. I see him surrounded by his group of friends all the time, and there's always laughter coming from that group, and Jared is a joy to be around. Jared is a member of the Hoboken Hispanic Culture Club bowling team and the boys' volleyball team. Mr. Thomas, Jared's volleyball coach, shares that he has grown, shown great improvement as a back-row receiver, and we are looking forward to the spring seizing, having him play this upcoming games. Last season, Jared played a key role in locking in the first boys' win in program history. Overall, all of those who work with Jared have the same message. His success is a direct result of his work ethic, and everyone realizes that this is just the beginning for Jared. We are all confident that we will hear great things about him as he leaves for university. And just as he brightens the hallways here, he will bring that beautiful smile and heart to the next chapter of his life. We wish you well. Congratulations, Jared.
Now I'd ask the Steam Tank teacher leaders, Ms. Lauren Eakin and Ms. Denise Rodriguez-Valejo, to come up and receive their certificates for the great accomplishments of the Wallace and Calabro teams. Guys, come on up. Their knowledge, insight, and excitement for discovery lit a fire of inquiry that resulted in our district team winning first place in the 2018 New Jersey School Board Steam Tank Challenge held in Atlantic City. You see two people, but there are really 2.5. We are very honored to have you representing Hoboken Public Schools, and I would invite you to the microphone both after you receive your certificates so you can then pass the honor along to the amazing children and to talk a little bit about the hard work that got them the accolade that they are enjoying right now. Okay? Ms. Eakin, congratulations.
Good evening. I'm not a numbers person, but I want to run some numbers past you. Two, the number of years that we have participated in Steam Tank. As you may remember from last year, Steam Tank is a New Jersey School Board Association and US Army partnership that gives students an opportunity to create a new or modify an existing invention. Four hundred, that was the number of student submissions to Steam Tank for the 2017-2018 competition. Four, the number of teams we registered for the competition last year. Three, the number of Hoboken teams' Steam Tank organizers invited to the North Regional Competition held in April. Ninety, the number of teams from across the state that were invited to the finals this year at Workshop 2018 in Atlantic City. Thirty-two, the number of teams competing in the elementary division. October 23rd and 24th, the state finals, the date that two teams, one from Calabro and one from Wallace, took the stage to present their idea before a panel of judges. November 1st, the date we found out that one Hoboken team placed in the top three in their division. November 8th, the date the winners were announced at the annual teachers' convention. I'd like to introduce you to the three teams that proudly represented Hoboken at Steam Tank this past year. Hilo Heels is a group of fifth graders from Wallace. They presented at regionals. Their concept was a shoe that converts from a heel to a flat and back again, something I'm sure every woman in here would love to have. Those team members, unfortunately, most of them couldn't be here today, but Paz de La Torre was on that team, Genevieve Fink, Brianna Frias, Kayla Coins, Beatrice Olney, and Annalene Sichler. Eco Peddler, a mixed-grade group of students from Calabro and their concept of a workout bike that is fitted with an electric motor which connects to an energy-saving box, allowing energy during blackouts. This vision was invited to compete at the state level. The team included Mia Bezzalell, Emily Choce, Luca DiAngelo Ha, Jaden Derby, Madeline French, Axel Holstrom, and Rain Scion. And the first-place winner in the elementary division for Steam Tank 2018, the R-Book reusable notebook. As the name suggests, this reusable notebook can be used up to 100 times and was created by Wallace's own Cameron Daley, Rajan Grover, Eric Jacobson, Isabella Roach, and Priya Wolsky. We are so proud of all of the teams, their hard work, and their dedication. Thank you. Thank you.
For the next set of honorees, I'd ask Director Damian Arnon to come up and present the award for Staff Member of the Month to one Dave Stasiak.
Good evening. Mr. Stasiak is the hardest-working music teacher in the state. If not for his expertise and his craft, it is from building a program from the ground up and then not settling, but continuing to push and grow that program. Mr. Stasiak started with the Hoboken School District in March of 2010 at Hoboken High School. The Rockin' Red Wings have gone from a small concert band to an award-winning marching band. This fall, Mr. Stasiak and the marching band placed first in the West Orange Marching Festival, earned a Silver Award at the NJMEA Marching Band State Ratings Festival, and also earned a rating of Excellent at the Bloomfield Marching Festival. The Winter Concert Band has participated in NJCU Brass and Woodwind Day, with eight members of the band taking part in masterclasses and performing college-level concert music, and has also several members accepted into the NJCU High School Honors Wind Assemble. This spring, our marching band will be heading back for Year Two to Washington DC to participate in the National Memorial Day Parade. It is always nice to receive accolades for our hard work, but that is not the only thing Mr. Stasiak has his musicians focus on. This past November and December, the Select Traveling Band gave back to the community by playing at the city's Veterans Day Celebration in Elysian Park and spread holiday cheer performing for the Hoboken Tree Lighting, Hoboken Senior Center, Hoboken Retired Teachers' Association, and Alaris Nursing Home in Jersey City. This is just a few of the special events, but there are many in-district events that the band is requested for. Most notably, the Halloween parades at the elementary schools. I imagine the question becomes, how does one man get all this done? Mr. Stasiak is all-in. He runs morning practices, PGP practices, and after-school practice for the marching band. He spends time at the middle school every day, ensuring that he is creating a feeder program for the high school and he can continue to build on their musical talents. During football season, he cannot get on the field until 7 o'clock at night, so he waits. There is very little time in the day that is not spent working with students. With all this on his plate, if he ever calls because he needs the speaker set up and auditorium or the projector loaded, he gets it done. Mr. Stasiak utilizes his passion for music as a way to connect with students. He goes beyond the musical connection and gets to know students on a personal level. He recognizes that he understands the importance of building this relationship with students in order to get them to meet the standards that he has set for all of them. Not only is Mr. Stasiak a talented teacher, he is also a performer himself. In February, we will be, Mr. Stasiak's actually taking up the coveted role of Donnie in Ms. Miller's Tony and Tina's Wedding, so save the date for that. When we think about school, we always think about the math and science classes. Here at Hoboken High School, we are just as proud of our music program and the man who puts it all together. Congrats, Mr. Stasiak.
Last but absolutely not least, at this time, we would like to honor two more of our exceptional teachers who are ensuring that we continue our amazing trajectory of excellence. It is with great pleasure that we recognize the work of Erica Lynn and Cynthia Nie for their contributions to the Hoboken Public School District. Unfortunately, Ms. Nie could not join us this evening because she is ill, but I would still like to tell you all about her. She joined... You can hang with me if you want. Okay. She joined our district as a Mandarin Chinese teacher in September of 2017. She came to us as we were beginning to build our Mandarin program. She not only holds a Bachelor of Arts in East Asian Studies and a Master's Degree in the Art of Teaching Chinese, but also holds a certification to teach English as a second language. Currently, she is participating in a professional development program at Princeton University. She constantly seeks to perfect her teaching craft and expand her knowledge base. Under her leadership, Mandarin will expand to Level 3 at Hoboken High School and in September. Ms. Lynn, who is with us this evening, began as a teacher in the Hoboken Public Schools in September of 2018. She holds a Bachelor of Arts in English Teaching from Da Yeh University, did I do that right, in Taiwan, and a Master's Degree in Applied Language Studies and Teaching English to Speakers of Other Languages. Ms. Lynn predominantly teaches our elementary schoolchildren, but has the experience to teach at both the middle and high school levels as well. As a result of her excitement, the children in her classes are becoming more and more confident as they learn conversational phrases through songs and hands-on projects. As a result of Ms. Lynn's commitment to our district, the Mandarin program will certainly expand at the K-8 level in September. On December 11th, a delegation of educators from Ningbo, China, visited the Hoboken Public School District. It was not only an honor to be asked to serve as a model for STEM education, but a joy to host such an accomplished group of teachers, administrators, and education ministers. In order for this visit to occur in the most meaningful way, we needed to enlist the assistance of both Ms. Lynn and Ms. Nie. Both of these teachers agreed to help without hesitation and they jumped right in. They spent the entire day with us, translating for both parties. They represented our district in a way that should make everyone in this room and beyond it very proud. Although neither has served the district very long, their level of comfort and knowledge, speaking of district programs, was comprehensive. When they interacted with the students in the classrooms we visited, their pride was apparent. There was unquestionable respect reciprocated between and among the students and Ms. Lynn and Ms. Nie. Both of these fine educators are more than welcomed additions to our staff. They were hired to begin a Mandarin Chinese program in our district, but they have gifted us with so much more. In addition to their commitment to global education, they are dedicated and passionate about the social, emotional, and academic growth of each and every child in our district. They are innovative, and most of all, they love the teaching profession and their students. Great things are on the horizon for both Ms. Lynn, Ms. Nie, our district, as a result of their service to our schools and students. Please join me in congratulating them both.
Well, congratulations to all of the Students of the Month, the Steam Tank challengers, and to all of our wonderful staff that were highlighted tonight. Next, Dr. Johnson will be giving her report, but we're going to take a few-minute break in between in case some of the families need to leave and get to bed. So five minutes and then we'll start back up. Okay, we're going to get back, started back up again. Next, we're going to go into the superintendent's report. Dr. Johnson?
Hi, good evening. Obviously, that was a wonderful set of recommendations, or recognitions. In addition to our honored staff members and Students of the Month, I could not be more proud of our students who participated in this Steam Tank Challenge. I actually had the distinct pleasure of watching both of the final teams down in Atlantic City in the semifinal round and then also in the final round. And it was, it was a wonderful experience, it really was, to see the kids so excited about all of their, their hard work. And also to watch the teachers kind of stand there with pride on the sideline, almost attempting to try to hold back, to not get themselves involved in order to show that the kids could be independent and have confidence presenting. So I was very, very proud of everyone that was involved. This evening, I do have a few items to share with the Board of Education. First, I would like to publicly thank Stevens Institute for their continuous and ever-expanding partnerships. In addition to the Summer ACES and Summer PSC and G Programs that our students have been invited to and have participated in, as well as tutoring and work-study programs that benefit our schools, our staff members have also been involved in a variety of professional development opportunities through Stevens Center for Innovation in Engineering and Science Education. Most recently, Stevens professors and students participated in the brainstorming process for the creation of a living classroom wet lab and an outdoor play area housed here at Hoboken Middle School. Both areas are suitable for middle school and elementary school students. The outdoor play area is one step away from completion. In fact, everything that's out there has been installed and ready to go. The plantings, though, will be done shortly and the surface will be poured as soon as the construction work for the wet lab, living classroom is complete. The Innovative Learning Space, or what we're calling, we originally began calling the Innovative Classroom or the Living Classroom, has kind of shifted to a wet lab, just because it seems like the majority of focus that we're going to have in that room is going to deal with the aquatic portion of the ecosystem of the Hudson River. So as a result of that, we're kind of like shifting the name a little bit. It has taken a bit longer than originally scheduled. We're in month five of the construction. However, early on, we decided to do a large-scale drainage project and also update the fire alarm system in conjunction with that particular project to benefit overall not only the space downstairs, but the school building holistically. So that's kind of put us behind a little bit, but it appears that we're about 45 to 60 days away from completion. The space will be open to the entire school district to learn about the Hudson River as both an estuary and an ecosystem. Most recently, the Hoboken Public Schools were informed that some of our staff members were accepted to participate in Stevens Green Infrastructure Technologies Project. So three of our middle school teachers, as a result of a grant, are going to be participating in five days of professional development and training in the Stevens Living Laboratory, which not only will enhance our existing science curriculum, but we hope that it will also enhance the operation of our own wet lab when we do, in fact, open it up soon. I'm happy to announce that also a group of high school students, young women from Hoboken High School, have been invited to participate in the Women in Business Careers Workshop at Stevens Institute on February 22nd. And finally, Hoboken High School students will once again be participating in the Stevens SAT Program. So we're excited about all of those partnerships and continued learning experiences with Stevens and by Stevens. Second, and it's something that we have maybe spoke briefly about in committee a few months ago, but I'm happy to report that we're actually ready to go with this, and that is our Guidance Department, under the leadership of Mr. Damian Arnon, has worked to establish another college/university partnership. This time, the partnership is with Hudson Community College. So in addition to the dual-credit high school/collage credit opportunities that we already have right now at Hoboken High School, next year's incoming class will have the opportunity to participate fully in Hudson Community College's Project LEAP program, which is going to enable our students to actually earn college credits while they're in the high school, just like they would in our other dual-credit programs. But this time, they'll have the ability to graduate with both a high school diploma and an associate's degree simultaneously. So that's going to be rolled out for the class of 2023. Third, I have provided updates in the past regarding our membership in the New Jersey Consortium for Excellence Through Equity. I'm proud to report that a group of our staff members, who are a part of our district's Diversity Steering Committee, are going to be attending a full-day workshop tomorrow on brain-based strategies to promote complete and total student engagement in the classroom. So the teachers that are attending that and the administrators are excited to go, and I think I explained this last time, they participate in ongoing dialogue after the courses through a Google Classroom that's shared with all of our staff members holistically. Fourth, we continue to patiently wait for our written confirmation regarding our high-performing CUSAC status and also our expanded Project Lead the Way National Schools of Distinction Award, or I should say, actually, awards. But I would like to announce that collectively, after doing some data analysis and crunching, that our student body has shown close to a 40% growth in mathematics achievement through the standards-based edmentum diagnostic system since the start of the school year. And we're also watching the ELA performance particularly growth, and we have noted a 49.7% growth in English Language Arts overall as well. Our staff and students are raising the bar as we strive to be locally recognized as a premier educational choice and widely touted as a best-practice model. Fifth, it's also probably on the minds of a lot of individuals, particularly two of the Wallace students who just left and made sure they asked me, "When can we play on the playground?" So I'd like to give a little bit of an update regarding the Wallace Replacement Fence. So that fence is actually set to be replaced this week, however, due to weather. I want to make sure that everyone understands if it rains too much or if there's snow, it will have to be shifted to next week. But it is, the fence has been created and it is ready to go. Sixth, there has also been a number of questions regarding bollards in that area by Wallace. So I would like to report to the board that we did receive contact and exchange contact. I had a conversation regarding the installation of bollards with the city. We are going to be in further communication regarding it because it's definitely something that requires the exploration of a multitude of options, because we are looking at two components. One is the area that is on the fence itself, which would be ours, but then there's also a sidewalk area. Then everyone does need to understand that Willow is a county-owned and operated street, and so it needs to have wider conversation. This is not necessarily solely a Board of Education conversation. So we're happy, we're thankful that we're going to be engaged in a more formal conversation with the city about this because they may be able to guide us appropriately, or in fact, we may be able to help guide the city appropriately into what might be the best solution. So we're in the process of doing that as well. Right now, we're knee-deep in the budget process, and everybody, I'm sure, is aware of the fact that developing a school budget is challenging. of the fact that developing a school budget is challenging, and the Hoboken School District's challenge is going to be extremely great this year as a result of notification that we will have a decrease in state aid. But while we're working through a number of scenarios regarding the development of a budget that ensures that programs and services for students are not, in fact, going to be affected, we do need to factor in our growing enrollment at the K-12 level, that's for sure. But in addition to the growth in enrollment at the K-12 level, we also will need to take into consideration for September, the need to factor in seven additional preschool classes that the Department of Education has just informed us that we will need to be rolling out in September as well. Therefore, we're reviewing all of our educational spaces district-wide. We're reviewing and looking at all of our classrooms district-wide, and just about every space that's possible for us to be able to operate preschool classes that meet the regulations set forth by the licensing group and also that meet code in terms of space and so on and so forth. So with that being said, I am working toward developing a set of recommendations to share with the Board of Education and also present out. We're shooting for the February meeting so that we have the ability to do that. But in the meantime, with those additional seven classes, preschool might be on people's minds, so I would like to announce that February 6th is the date that we're going to be hosting the preschool presentation. We will be hosting that preschool presentation here in the Demarest or Hoboken Middle School Auditorium. We usually have operated parental kind of site visits after that meeting, but we are going to host the meeting, but we are not going to do the preschool site visits right after. And predominantly, the reason is because at this point, we don't know if there will be some shifts in where preschool classrooms will be, so being on the safe side, we're going to do the presentation, roll out the registration and enrollment information, and then stop that presentation. We will roll then into our preschool registration week, which will take place between April 1st and April 5th, and that preschool registration will actually take place in the Rue Building. At that point, we should have a clearer picture of preschool locations, visitations, and so on and so forth. And then finally, after a lot of consideration and thought regarding the timing of the departure of our Collaboral School principal in the middle of the school year, and also the consideration of the district holistically and what our administrative needs may be in the future, our immediate needs right now, we came to the conclusion that we would like to, and I was going to do a recommendation for an acting principal from now until the end of the school year. Our major concern was that at this time in the school year, that we wanted to make sure that the children were introduced to an individual that they were familiar with and that they felt comfortable with, and the same holds true for the parents in the Collaboral School building. So as a result of that, after going through many applications, we kind of looked inward, and I'm making the recommendation this evening to recommend Jack Baker as the acting principal for Collaboral School from now until June 30th. So I'm extremely honored to have Jack join the administrative team in this temporary role. Jack has asked to say a few words, so I'm going to end my superintendent's report with that and let him address the board.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, thank you so much. I want to thank the Board of Education. This is truly a wonderful opportunity. I want to thank Dr. Vespagnani as well for helping me and training me for this day to become the Collaboral Principal. 14 years ago, I came to the Hoboken Public Schools, it seems like yesterday, but as you know, in this business, it flies by, and you develop so many relationships, and looking back and teaching and coaching, was able to capture so many memories that I will truly, truly remember forever. But like I said, I'm really embracing this opportunity. Being a school leader and a principal is something that I've always aspired to be. It's definitely a dream come true for me, and I would just really like to thank the Board of Education for this opportunity. People who know me know that Hoboken is my second home, and I am very excited to assume this responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and congratulations to Mr. Baker. Now, we're going to move on to committee reports. Mr. Bolden, do you have a business administrator's report?
I don't have any formal report. I just wanted to tell everyone that I'm thrilled for my new role here at the school district, and I look forward to the journey ahead.
And we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
We'll go to Curriculum and Wellness, Ms. Delara.
Sure. Good evening. The Curriculum and Wellness Committee met on January 3rd. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Ms. Evans, Ms. Katamatory, Dr. Johnson, and myself. There are no action items on your agenda tonight, but I would like to just kind of touch, based on a few items that were discussed, which include our Classroom Without Walls, excited for our students to go to Japan, the Harvard Model Congress, which is set to begin March 13th to the 19th, our high school students are going to Spain, the Girls Who Code Summer Immersion Program with Jet, the high school girls will participate at no cost. There are unlimited seats, however, applications must be submitted in order to participate. In the Performing Acts Department, Tony and Tina's Wedding is set for February 8th, 9th, and 10th. The Addams Family is set to take place on May 17th, 18th, and 19th. That is our district-wide play. Sign up to auditions will be on February 26th. Notices will go home, and plenty of emails as well. Congratulations to our high school students on winning the NJSIAA Sportsmanship Award. And lastly, Wellness, we spoke about Pompladonian. They're going to start sending out a monthly newsletter, which is going to highlight some of the new healthier food items, kind of sharing the fruit and the vegetable of the month, so I'm excited to be sharing that with you. I'm excited that they are listening and that they're working with us to better improve their program. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Facilities, Ms. Conna.
Yes. The Facilities Committee met Thursday, January 3rd at noon. In attendance were Mr. Callagie, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Angley, Ms. Delara, and myself, Ms. Conna. As you can see, this month's agenda is very light. There were no facility requests this month. The only items on the agenda for approval are the fire and safety drill reports, and we reviewed and recommend for approval. Couple other things that we had discussed were with the middle school playground and classroom, which Dr. Johnson has already reported on, as well as the Wallace fence she has reported on, so thank you.
Okay, moving to Finance, which is me this month. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, January 3rd at 7:30. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Bolden, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Takerian, Ms. McGurk, and myself. Finance has a light agenda this month, and the committee reviewed all agenda items and recommends all for board approval. There are two donations on the agenda, and we'd like to thank Azadeh Solemani via the JP Morgan Chase Goodworks Workplace Giving Program and Sunals International for their generous donations to the district. In addition to agenda items, the committee also discussed state aid cuts and the use of the emergency reserve to cover those costs this year. We also discussed the 2019-2020 budget, which is, planning is underway for. And that concludes my report. Moving to Governance, Ms. Evans.
Okay. The Governance and Personnel Committee also met on January 3rd. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Conna, Superintendent Johnson, and myself. We reviewed all agenda items and recommend all for approval tonight. I did just want to point out one, and since Principal Abraham is here, he might have more detail, but the middle school first PTO movie night is this Friday, and it's the movie A Thousand to One, and it's about the inspirational story of New Jersey native Corey Weisman, and it's also open to fifth and sixth graders currently, so it should be a great night. And lastly, the committee also discussed enrollment and staffing for the current and also looking ahead to the upcoming school year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I don't have a president's report tonight, but I just wanted to add a welcome to our new board members. This is our first official, regular meeting as a team, and over the last week, we've reorganized and established board committees for the upcoming year, so I look forward to working with each of you on those committees. Next, we will move on to public comments on agenda items.
Looks like we have no speakers public for the public agenda.
Okay. Then moving to consent agenda, is there a motion?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any, is there any discussion or items to pull? No? Okay, Mr. Bolden, if you could call the roll.
Surely. Ms. Katamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
I need to abstain on the minutes. Item...
From November?
Yes, 6.01, and yes on everything else.
Thank you. Ms. Conna?
Yes.
Mr. Clubfeld?
I must abstain on 10.01 and vote yes on everything else.
Excellent. Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Takerian?
Yes.
And Ms. Angley?
Yes.
So the, all the items pass?
Okay. All right. Do we have any public comments on agenda or non-agenda items?
There are no speakers signed up for the non-agenda items.
All right. Well, that concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Meeting adjourned.